We will go ahead and get started. And I'm going to kind of control the slides, but I will introduce a very important and very special guest, our dean and the, the president of health affairs and FAU Health, Dr. Julie Palitzis.
Thanks so much, Dr. Drowes, and thanks for arranging this, and most especially thanks to those of you that could make it tonight. We wanted to talk to you about what's going on in the College of Medicine. It's really important for us not just to look within the walls of our institution, but to look outside and to see all the great things that you all are doing. And just have this dialogue back and forth about how we can be better partners. So thanks again for coming and we'll be recording this for those of you, if you know people that couldn't make it, just to let them know a little bit about the landscape of what's going on. Next slide, please. So first and foremost, we wouldn't be us without all of you. And you know, as of today, Stephanie told me, we have thirteen hundred and twenty-one affiliate faculty that are involved in so many things we do. We have so many hospital partners, ever expanding for our GME partnerships, as well as for our UME partnerships. So we know that we are part of this community, but we are a small part compared to everything that you all bring to the table. Next slide. So just a little bit of an agenda for tonight. I'm going to give the, the welcome that I already did and talk about an introduction about what we've done this year. Then I'll turn it over to Dr. Drowes to speak about faculty affairs and community engagement. Dr. Suzanne Bertolo will then speak about student affairs and curriculum. For those of you that don't know, Dr. Bertolo, she is now in charge of our UME. And she has extensive background in this and actually was brought on to do just this. But then COVID hit and we had rearranged the deck chairs. So now she is in the role where she was meant to be. And though she's been in the role for a short amount of time, it has been a true pleasure and I'm so impressed with everything she's done. And then we'll wrap up with Scott Alter, who many of you know, and really has done something phenomenal, I think, for all of us and especially the residents, the students and the affiliates in trying to streamline this amorphous clinical research enterprise we have and how we can get involved in trying to figure out how we do this across different entities. So excited to turn it over to my team after we summarize some of the great accomplishments from Tom this year. Next slide. We had the opportunity, and I, and many, I hope some of you received the Tom newsletter or Dean's letter that came out on May eighteenth. And we also had the opportunity to speak live about this. And I, I wanted to, I hope you'll open your email and take a look at it. But I just wanted to talk about some of the high points of what we all have done this year together. Next slide. So it wouldn't be a year without mentioning our FAU men's basketball team. It is such a pleasure to be able to go everywhere and to say, I'm from Florida Atlantic and then have people know where that is. And you know, we, we, we actually got the equivalent in one point nine billion dollars in marketing revenue from making the final four. So you know, clearly marketing that we couldn't buy. And so excited that the team is all, all returning this year and that we were able to keep Coach May and that we'll be able to increase the, the size of, of the arena. And you know, I think interim president Volnik always talks about the fact that she was so impressed as she traveled with the team through this, about what great students they were and how disciplined they were. And you all have known for a long time how special our students are. So on and off the court, we have aimed for excellence. Next slide. So one of the things that, you know, as, as a dean or as, you know, a university president that you're evaluated on is metrics. I know that when we talk about US News and World Reports, it can be a bit controversial as to, you know, whether we should be looking at these or not. Having said that, you know, I, I think it's really good to have an idea of where you are so that you can approve. So we actually took a close look at this and, and you know, this is actually my favorite accomplishment of the year. And the, the reason is not because, you know, of the number and the fact that we were ranked for the first time, though I'm super excited about that. But it's because this was something that we all did together and really worked very hard at and were very intentional about. And this gives us a starting point and you know, I, I think we're going to set an aspirational goal over the next three to five years to get up to like eighty-five. And I think that would be a, a great metric. There's a hundred and seventy-two medical schools in the ranking. And so one oh six is really quite good for a medical school that's eleven years old. Next slide. Another big thing that we were able to do this year since, for the first time since the medical school was founded, was that we were able to lobby the state legislature for additional funds for education. And so our budget had been stagnant and we get, we have different pots of money. And so some of this comes from the GMB consortium, some comes from philanthropy. But when we're talking about state funds, that number had been stagnant. And we were able to get five million in recurring dollars a year. And what that will allow us to do is a lot of the expansion that Dr. Bertolo and others will be talking to about, as well as just making some critical investments in infrastructure and academic medicine. Next slide. So we've started some of this expansion. Our, our goal is to increase our class sizes and our total number of medical students by over sixty percent over the coming years. So we've started construction on the SIM Center already and we're hoping that's going to be done in two weeks. We're starting construction for a second auditorium at the College of Medicine next, I think sometime this month, because we're trying to get the, the noisy work done. And you know, then the building right next to the College of Medicine, which is OB one. Some of you might know that from having offices or where you've done some interviews. That building is now becoming College of Medicine space as well. We have some fun and new other things also in that building. We're having a research MRI that is just getting installed as well as down the road a bit, a large animal facility. We've started fundraising around these efforts and we actually have our first donor, Jane Klein, who has named the Faculty Hub in, in the building. Next slide. And you know, that leads us to philanthropy. Over the last fifteen months, we have raised forty-two million dollars in philanthropy. Many of you know about the big twenty-eight million dollar gift towards doctors without debt. And you know, that's an aspirational be close gift, so we have a ways to go. We have just received another twelve million dollar gift that you'll be hearing some details about in the coming weeks. And this involves programmatic growth as well as our first department chair to have an endowed chair. Next slide. Well, it didn't touch March Madness, but our marketing team were the two busiest women I know. And it just killed it with getting us out on social media as well as marketing and in print. And we had the equivalent of sixty-nine million in advertising value units. So an all-time high in that regard as well. Charlie Hennigan continues to be a prolific writer. And so actually our most cited and, and the, our most cited paper and our paper that got the most visibility was his work on processed foods. And you know, to get to the conclusion of that paper, processed foods are not good free. It was featured in the New York Times. Next slide. And I mentioned the expansion. We have LCME approval to go to eighty. We're going to go to a total of one oh four the following year. So eighty this July, a hundred and four next July, and we continue to do quite well with ninety-three percent of our med school graduates being satisfied with their education. Thank you all to all of you that participate in that. Next slide. And here we have made some adjustments with the departure of Sarah Wood for Harvard. As I mentioned, Dr. Bertolo is now in charge of undergraduate medical education. Mark De Corsio is doing a hybrid role, kind of a little bit in educational affairs and some in admissions. Michelle Elizette Winuski is doing the first two years of med school with Jen Foster doing the third and fourth year. Lisa Martinez and Suzie Weiner are helping direct the third and fourth year respective. Next slide. GME continue to have great residency programs. For the first time in three years, we added some programs. We have two new ACGMA fellowships, one in pulmonary critical care and one in functional neurosurgery. We're hoping to add two more next year. And importantly, for over forty percent of our graduates stay in Florida. So truly of the community for the community. Next slide, please. One of the things that sometimes we don't talk about as much is our graduate students. We have a lot of masters and PhD students, over a hundred. And so our master's program is two years. And then our PhD program is, you know, kind of however long it takes, on average, four or five years. And so their graduation rates are high and they're going into STEM fields upon their graduation. We do have a post-bac program, so this is generally that transition time when you're trying to get into a medical school. And so all of our twenty students in the post-bac program, we're trying to get into med school. We have about a fifty percent success rate the first year. And then we keep with them the second year and about fifty percent of those go on to med school. So really amazing numbers considering, you know, that there's a hundred applicants for each spot. Next slide. Scott will talk more to you about our research enterprise. Clinical research is an increasing part of it. We've had our largest research portfolio in the history of College of Medicine this year. Seventy-one active awards totaling thirty-one million dollars. We have multiple new clinical databases. We have a whole team of people and a two-hundred percent increase in the number of med students doing research at College of Medicine rather than looking outside it. So really proud of this initiative and all Dr. Robichaud's hard work in getting us those databases. Next slide. And we worked really hard over this year to be intentional about what we're doing. You know, in, in order to know you've gotten someplace, it's important to have a strategic plan. So we've worked through this strategic plan and I have posted it on, on the website. So if of interest, you can see our priorities and where we're headed. And we didn't just create this and, you know, put it in a box somewhere. We're actively, you know, weekly going through where we are with the strategic plan and moving forward. Next slide. I really just want to thank everybody. You know, this is a, a, a really exciting time to be in South Florida and to be at the College of Medicine. And really, you know, our vision is to transform the way healthcare is delivered in South Florida and beyond with our community support. So thank you very much for your attention and I will turn it over to Dr. Drowes.
Thank you so much. I think it's just really exciting seeing all of that together in one place and hearing about all of our achievements. So thank you for, you know, being an amazing and inspiring leader and, you know, taking us in, in this great direction. So I'm going to shift a little bit. I have been the faculty affairs dean for the past couple of years and worked very closely with our community faculty, but I'm actually going to be transitioning away from that administrative role to, to focus more on my clinical practice, which is a little sad for me because I've loved working with the community faculty. But I know that there are fabulous people who are stepping in and will do a fantastic job of keeping everything running in such a positive direction and moving forward. So Dr. Allison Ferris, she's our program director for our internal medicine residency program and our chair of our medicine department. She is stepping up to be the assistant dean of faculty development. So she'll be, you know, continuing all the work in planning activities and offering things to advance all of us as clinicians, as teachers, as academicians. And you know, she's already done a ton of that this year. She'll be great in that role. Dr. Stuart Goldman, if you're part of the Teaching Academy, he's going to be stepping in and leading the Teaching Academy, which is really exciting. The Teaching Academy had a great year. We just welcomed another class. It's open for anybody who's interested in improving their teaching and, and cares about teaching. And I know he'll be a fantastic leader. He was the leader of the Teaching Academy at Boston Children's at Harvard for many years before he came down to FAU. So he's done this before and I know, you know, he'll just be fantastic. And there will be a national search for a new faculty affairs dean in the future. But on an interim basis, we're hiring Dr. Michael Dobbs, who will be the chair of our clinical neurosciences department. He is phenomenal. We're so excited for him to join us in a couple of weeks and he'll be in that role on an interim basis. And he'll have some support from, from Dr. Thorndike, who is a national expert in faculty affairs. So we are in great hands and you know, these are just some new faces and new people that you'll have the opportunity to get to know and to work with. So welcome to this presentation on behalf of myself and Stephanie Gabrielson, who's our amazing senior coordinator. And I know that you probably deal with her quite a bit with, you know, appointments and, and questions. We are always available and happy to connect with you and answer questions. I've put our, our contact information here. We just, you know, always welcome hearing from you, you know, questions, anything that we can do to make your experience at the university easier. And these are our new leaders that I mentioned. Dr. Ferris will be the assistant dean for faculty affairs and Dr. Stuart Goldman with the Teaching Academy. They are both incredible. And Dr. Ferris is going to take over the credentialing and appointments for all of our community faculty. So you know, you may speak with her when, when you have questions about that. I did want to share, you know, that we have created a survey that lists all of the opportunities to get involved at the College of Medicine for our faculty, whether you're interested in, you know, teaching, you know, throughout our curriculum, medical students, residents, there's always opportunities for precepting. And that can be with medical students or students that are considering, you know, medicine in the future. We always need help on our admissions committee. I've been a reviewer for several years. It's a lot of fun. We need help with reviews and interviews. It's a great opportunity to shape the future of medicine and make sure that we get the highest quality students. You know, we have so many applicants and we really put a lot of effort into making sure that we select the ones who, you know, will be the right fit and can be, can stay in our community and, and do all of these great things. We need expertise. You know, if you want to share about your specialty, you know, mentor students who are interested in your specialty, research is a big one. And I'm going to let Dr. Scott Alter share more about how that works. Always, you know, community outreach, representing the College of Medicine, philanthropy, fundraising, whatever it is that you want to do, involve, want to do to be involved, we welcome and appreciate your participation. So you can scan this. It's also available if you go to our med.fau.edu website and click on the affiliate faculty link. You can also do the survey there and you know, it comes right to us. And then, you know, somebody can get back to you and talk to you about, about what you want to do. So I did want to plug that link and our survey. We have lots of things available through faculty affairs. Basically, we're here to help. We help with your appointment. We're going to be processing renewals for everybody that's expiring this year. So you know, I know you sent CVs and you know, we, we've got letters coming and you know, we'll be renewing appointments very soon. We have opportunities for continuing medical education if you need credits. We have access to teachingphysician.org and you know, different ways of giving you the ME credits. With faculty development, if you're just looking to, you know, work on a particular skill, whether it's teaching or something else, you know, the Teaching Academy offers peer reviews of your teaching. You know, someone will come to the bedside or into the classroom, wherever you're teaching and give you, you know, as a peer, their feedback on, you know, how the, the session went. So lots of things that we offer, lots of ways, you know, that we want to support you and help you. We're really proud to be your academic home and we're, you know, just proud to have you as, as a part of, of our college. And these are just some of the resources available through our website. We had, you know, access to these prime modules, teachingphysician.org, peer reviews, the Teaching Academy. We have a group on women in medicine and science. If anybody wants to join that, it's a fantastic group. We bring in speakers. We, you know, teach each other about different things. We recently worked on our elevator pitches together. It's, it's a phenomenal group. We have a lending library. If you're ever on campus, we've got lots of books related to a variety of topics, leadership, you know, development, academics, career planning in academics, teaching, you, you know, clinical topics. We have a lending library in our faculty lounge, which is on the third floor of our college and it's available to all of you. And you know, we're just here to help. So if there's something that you think would be helpful, by all means, reach out to us. And we're happy to, you know, consider that and, and see what we can do to improve your experience. And you know, the, the dean, when she arrived, really talked about the college being of the community and for the community. I just wanted to make a plug for our community engagement. We, we have a, a director of community engagement. She wasn't able to be here tonight and she runs all of our pipeline programs. We're always interested in supporting the next generation of physicians. We, we bring students from, you know, targeted high schools that don't have access to role models who are in healthcare. And we teach them about careers in healthcare and, you know, just having creative ways of getting the best students into our program through various programs that, you know, kind of pathways that target them and, and, you know, will bring them to FAU. So those are things that we continue to work on, continue to need support and, and help with. I just wanted to share our white coat reception, which is really special. So we have a reception for our, our white coat donors that want to support our students. Every new student that comes, we purchase their first white coat. We also purchase a stethoscope for them through the Palm Beach County Medical Society. So you know, lots of ways to support the students. We're going to be doing an in-person reception the first Wednesday in August. And if you're interested in that, you know, the link will be coming up. The white coat ceremony is that following Friday and you're certainly welcome to come. We always have a really inspiring keynote speaker. I'll share that last year, our second year students spontaneously gave a standing ovation to our first year students. Or no, it was the reverse. It was our first year students giving our second year students a standing ovation. Seeing the students entering the profession and getting their first white coat and what it means to them. There is no better moment. And you know, we'd love, I'm sure you can remember, you, you know, your first white coat. We'd love to have you, have you join us if, if you're available. And you know, a lot of our students really require financial assistance, whether it's, you know, their equipment, supplies, you know, the match, all of these things that they're doing. You know, they really need our support. And so this white coat reception and ceremony is just a way that we show them that the community is behind them. And so this is the link here. If you're interested, you can look on the website and see, you know, the different things that are available through the White Coats for Care. You know, I've been on the committee and attended the event every year. And it's, it's really a special time and it means so much to our students. And I also wanted to share, we have our Marcus Institute for Integrative Health, which is, you know, available for, for consultation and accepting new patients. One of the things that we do that's really fabulous is we have a wellness hub. And all of these activities are free and open to the community. You don't have to be our patient to come. So even if, you know, you have someone in your practice that's looking for resources and you know, wants free yoga, free nutrition consults, free Tai Chi, they can register. And you know, they don't have to come to our practice, but they can come and, you know, have a consult or, you know, participate in any of these activities since they're all free and open to the public. And you know, I just wanted to plug them because it's, you know, it's a beautiful space that we have. And, and the idea was to engage the community and make our community healthier. So you know, this is one way that we can do it. If you would like flyers, I'm happy to email them to you or bring them to your practice. If you, if you want to share them with patients or email them to all your friends or neighbors. Everybody is welcome. And these are just really, really great resources and tools to help all of our patients be healthier. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Suzanne Bertolo, who's going to talk to us about education at the college.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Drowes, and thank you to Dean Palitzis for her earlier kind words. So it is great to be with all of you this evening and I want to add my gratitude for your attendance at this session and, and also for everything you do for our students. So I'm going to provide just a brief overview of our educational programs, not just the UME program, but I also brought some information shared by our other leaders for the different programs across our college. So I'm going to start by expanding a little bit. If you'll go to the next slide, please. Start with the graduate programs, which they're led by Dr. Mark Cantoro, who is our associate dean for graduate programs. And as Dean Palitzis was describing, this, this slide just provides a little overview of the, the actual numbers. You know, the, the, the number of students who have gone through the masters in biomedical science program. So over the past five years, we've had one hundred and seventy-four students graduate with the, the master's degree in this program. Of these students, thirty thousand dollars was awarded to our thesis students for their summer assistantships. In the current, or the past academic year, twenty-two, twenty-three, we've had thirty-five graduates from the program and welcomed thirty-six new students, three of whom have been awarded assistantships. Now the year ahead, academic twenty-three, twenty-four, we are going to have twenty to twenty-three students matriculating in the summer and the fall of twenty-twenty-three. Next slide, please. So also the doctoral programs as mentioned, this is the doctoral program, the PhD in integrative biology. This is our biomedical science track. Over the past five years, we've had ten students graduate with their PhD in this program. And then the academic year past, twenty-two, twenty-three, we, we have ten PhD students, doctoral students in this program. Next slide, please. Now our post-baccalaureate program, as described, is also seeing expansion and growth. So in the year twenty-three, twenty-four, the year ahead, we're going to have twenty to twenty-four students enrolled. And then in twenty-four, twenty-five, the plan is to expand even further. And we'll have twenty students in each of two cohorts. So twenty will enroll in the fall and twenty in the spring. So growth in this program as well. Next slide, please. And now back to the UME program of an expansion is the word of the day. So if you could go to the next slide. Okay, seventy-two. So I'm going to emphasize this. This is the past class. So this is the class, the year that just left, or the first year class. We welcomed an expanded number of students in this past first year class. So the class of twenty-twenty-two, we welcomed seventy-two students. And I want to thank everyone involved, which is a monstrous team of people who contributed to welcoming them and, and helping them navigate through their first year. So that is, we have warm welcome to all of them. And with warm welcomes, we also have to say some farewells and good luck and share all of our pride with our graduates who, who graduated in April. So these are just some slides from the festivities around that happy time. Next slide. Okay, so some statistics for the class of twenty-twenty-three, we've had again, one hundred percent of our students, our graduates, I should say, were placed successfully, representing nineteen different specialties. And over a third of our, our graduates have gone into primary care and twenty-eight percent matched in programs in our own state. So we are very proud of them. All right. Next slide. And they matched in some of the top programs in the nation. So this is just a representative sample. But again, we're very proud of their success. And again, thankful to all of you who helped make it happen and contribute. Okay, next slide. All right. So the plan in the fall, we are approved, as Dean Palitzis described, we are approved to go to eighty students. Our class size will expand a little bit more. And so we are in the midst of that planning right now with our amazing team of faculty staff. And again, I want to thank all of you for the contributions that you've made and probably will continue to make as we welcome yet more students. So we are working on all sorts of different facets that go into expanding our class size. So streamlining some of our operations, modifying a little bit of the curricular offerings to accommodate a larger number of students. But we're very excited about this and we are looking forward to the fall. Next slide, please. All right. Again, we talked about the white hair coat ceremony. So welcoming our new class, I just put another plug in here. This is on behalf of our office of student affairs. So these are the details and the saved date. Again, it's Friday, August fourth at two PM and you're welcome to attend and it is a, a very fun event. And next slide, sorry. And then the ultimate plan is to move to one hundred and four students. So again, that application will be submitted in the upcoming months and we look forward to planning for that larger class size. So that will be one hundred and four in the, in the upcoming, the next year, not this upcoming year, but the year afterwards. Okay. So again, we are doing a bit, just to kind of as an aside, as we're structuring the year ahead with eighty students, we are taking advantage of this opportunity to implement some of the changes in our curricular structure, et cetera, to sort of, if you will, serve as a dress rehearsal for an even larger class size so that we can kind of have our own opportunity. so that we can kind of have our own um opportunity to try different techniques of our teaching methods and configuration of sessions, et cetera. So it's been a good opportunity to sort of trial that. Um, I wanna share some information from our GME programs. Those are led by our senior associate dean for GME, Dr. Curtis Whitehair. And as Dean Pulitzus mentioned, about forty one percent of our recent grad, or I'm sorry, these are twenty twenty two numbers. Forty one percent remained in Florida. But one other um interesting in piece of information, twenty eight percent remained in Palm Beach County, which is great. Um, so we're contributing to the um, you know, the medical community, so locally and and far away. Okay, next slide. All right, and this is just a representative sample of our um GME program grads from the current year. So we've had forty graduates from our residency programs and six from our fellowship programs for a total of forty six. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Alter, our assistant dean for clinical research, to talk more about our research research initiatives.
Thanks, Dr. Bertolo. Um, you can go on Dr. Drowes, the next slide. So as Dr. uh Dean Pulitzus mentioned, one of the goals of the Office of Research is to increase research within FAU, within our College of Medicine. Um, previously, we had a lot of students seek research opportunities outside of the College of Medicine. We want to change that, where we have our own internal opportunities. Over the last year or so, we've increased participation in our internal programs so that a hundred percent, we doubled the internal amount of research. And we want to further increase that. So what some of the goals of our college um in our Office of Research is to encourage enhancement. I'm sorry, encourage the engagement in clinical research across the entire college. We wanna increase the output of uh research activities from our students, residents and fellows. And to that, we need to foster better communication with our faculty and our learners. So we wanna connect our students, residents and fellows with our faculty. And that's both our core faculty and our community faculty members. Further, for everybody within the college, both again, our learners and our faculty, we want to increase our support um of research education of teaching you how to do research, um figure out the processes to help everyone get better engaged. And wanna collaborate with our hospital partners to help that happen in our clinical setting. Um, next slide, please. So in the past couple of years within the students at FAU, we've seen a great increase in the amount of research projects being conducted. We're not quite at the national average yet, but we're almost there. Hopefully this year, um, we'll get to at least meet, if not exceed the national average, where we have eighty two percent of our students participating in research. I think that's great. Next slide. Even though our students participating in research is not quite at the national average, we're greater than the national average in our scholarly output. So last year, sixty nine percent of all of our students had a peer reviewed paper that it was either submitted or published. And that's an exceptional number, again, higher than the national average. And even better than the national average was our rate of authorship of poster presentations and oral presentations at conferences. So our students that are engaged are very engaged. We wanna get that number even higher to have the opportunities available to them. Next slide, please. So in terms of the faculty and resources we have for you guys, um, within the Faculty Affairs website, and Dr. Drowes plugged this a little bit earlier, we have a section for research. And this gives you how you can participate with us in research, how you can engage with us, as well as some assistance in how to do research. Um, we have a new area for clinical research processes, which details at some of our hospitals and we're working to expand this. How to actually get your research approved, what the process is, who the approving people are and what um requirements are needed to actually get a project off the ground. Within the Office of Research, we're here to help you get that done. We want you to work with us, with our students, with our residents and fellows, and we wanna help you get research projects going. Next slide, please. We're also further building at our website with all the different opportunities for our students and other learners and helping you guys again, get research accomplished. So I'm trying to put all these resources um in one place to clothe them, to make it easily accessible. So that if you have any questions about the research process, you wanna help um work on a grant funded study or be the PI in your own um grant, we wanna help you get that. So that information is all hopefully easily available on the website. If you scan the QR code, it'll take you right to our Office of Research webpage. Next slide, please. Something that is underutilized, I think, across the board is our medical librarians. We've excellent medical librarians and they're here to help all of us in the College of Medicine. Um, there's an entire webpage created by the library of just how to get access to um different journals and medical applications. Um, there are some very useful tools that are available to everyone, not just students and and trainees, but also the faculty, where you can get some mobile apps on your phone for free just for being part of FAU. Um, getting access to medical databases, um even PubMed. Um, there's lots and lots of library resources that's available. And all you have to do is go to this link um and get the information. It also has information about how to get your ala card. So if you want to get the perk of having some discounts at random places, the library has access on how to get your ala card as well as connecting your FAU ID and email. So all that is available and um we'd be happy to help you connect with the library and get those resources to you. Next slide, please. And finally, engagements, how can you guys get more involved as the community faculty members? Every summer, the medical students, their M one year kickoff research, and they've started probably about two weeks ago or so now within their um their summer between M one and M two year. This is usually their first entry to the research process in the College of Medicine. And we have a bunch of fast tracks and that's internal projects we do with our students. We'd like to get more affiliate faculty involvement. Um, anyone that is interested in working with students or residents, please let me know. We currently have residency season, emergency medicine, internal medicine, neurology, psychiatry and surgery. And this is a little bit outdated now. We have two new fellowships, as Stinklet's mentioned, but we have current fellows in cardiovascular disease, geriatrics, hospice, palliative care um and vascular surgery. So if you are already in those areas, we have a pipeline of interested residents and fellows that would be happy to work with you guys. And if anyone has an existing project that they're working with on their own in the research realm, let me know. We can usually help find some learners that want to work with you guys and help you out. Um, we have a lot of interested students. We wanna be able to connect them to our faculty members during the research. And through the Office of Research, we can be that conduit to help connect everyone together. So there, and it has a question, so if you reach out to me or the Office of Research or Dr. Drowes and she can get ahold of me. Thank you, anything, I'll pass it back to you, Dr. Drowes.
Thank you so much. Um, that kind of is the conclusion of the formal remarks uh that we wanted to make this evening. Um, and yes, we can email this PowerPoint to you, great question. And um we will also post the recording uh on our website for anybody who wasn't able to uh to be here this evening. And uh we appreciate you as well. So um with that, I will just open it up. If there's any questions, we can, we can stop recording. Thank you so much for being here.